Unlimited budget, and you know, this has been a very challenging budget year, given the reductions in parking revenue that have occurred. But I think, you know, we're looking at sort of, you know, kind of building on what we've done with bike lanes is more to quick build or tactical improvements, everything from, you know, we responded to last year to a couple of LC orders about, you know, just things like striping, like you mentioned, to narrow travel lanes and other measures to try to visually, you know, in the roads. We're working on, you know, procuring speed feedback signs, which have been shown to reduce, you know, speeding on some of those types of streets. I think all the streets that you mentioned are, you know, that you mentioned are, you know, good candidates for those types of interventions. You know, I think Garden Street in particular is a street that's listed on the Bicycle Network Plan to become, hopefully transitioning over time into more of a low-speed, low-volume street that's more comfortable for cyclists, and that's something that's been, you know, stated in the Bike Network Plan for a while. And so we're starting to think about how do you actually make changes to those streets? You know, with the input from local residents, with, you know, the appropriate outreach to, you know, kind of get to where they need to be to be safer, you know, for all users, including cyclists and pedestrians. So I think it's, there's no, I hate to sort of provide a somewhat, you know, rambling answer, but there's not really one size fits all solution to these streets. I think we have to look at each one. You know, we are trying through our Vision Zero efforts to be more prioritizing, you know, based on safety concerns and, you know, crash history, which is obviously always something we take consideration, but trying to sort of make that the one of our more, one of our decision-making factors in terms of where we deploy some of these measures. But we, you know, I think it's good to hear, you know, where your concerns are and where concerns are from the rest of the community, and then we can definitely try to respond to those. I think Linian Streets, which I know obviously familiar with because it's in your neighborhood, you know, is a good example where, you know, there was a traffic calming project done there several years ago. I don't think, looking back at it now, it's necessarily as aggressive set of treatments as we might want to implement now, but it was, you know, the subject of community discussions and some changes. But again, you know, perhaps like, you know, we would take a slightly more aggressive approach now to the traffic calming, although it's also important to recognize that, you know, we have to do all that in collaboration with the fire department and make sure that we're, you know, not negatively impacting their response time. So that's sometimes why the measures aren't as aggressive as we might other want them to be. But, you know, I think, like I said, there's no one size fits all, but we are certainly committed to trying to address, you know, as many of these locations as quickly as possible. As, you know, as we sort of talked about in the answer to Vice Mayor Valance's question, we're also, you know, we're resource constrained, not just on the financial side, but also, you know, staff capacity and capacity of the community to, you know, accept the types of changes that you're, you know, alluding to that are very important, but also require, you know, the right level of outreach.
Well, you're going to get a lot of letters in the near future on this, and which leads me to my second, really abysmal, and again, I know you have to work with numbers, abysmal financing, traffic signal program for the year, 350,000, and I know each traffic signal, that's probably three traffic signals, if not less. Biddy, Vision Zero, very important, 300,000, traffic calming, 250, bicycle spot improvements, $25,000. That's not the lanes, that's pedestrian crossings, and bus stop improvements, 25,000. This is not Cambridge. I know you know this. I know the manager knows this. This is, this is almost a small-town budget for those items, and we have the funds to do something. I listed new park construct. That was meant for another list. That's a mistake on my part. But looking at that, it's abysmal, the budget. I mean, 25,000 for anything. You know what the market is, I know what the market is. Traffic calming, Vision Zero, and traffic signal is under $1 million, and a budget that's hundreds of millions of dollars. I'm bringing it up because this is growing in the city as a prime issue. And I even heard in East Cambridge, where you're working on Gore Street with community development and DPW, people are complaining about what's happening now, even during construction, not with the construction workers, but with traffic. And it's only going to get, and I greatly encourage you to increase these numbers to something that's much more plausible and therefore can be implemented in my lifetime, because at these numbers, these streets will not be. I mean, that's the reality. And it's just terrible, given the financial situation we're in. I realize we're in COVID, but these numbers are ridiculously low. So, please, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, obviously, we always would like to have more resources, but I think it's important to recognize that that's only one piece of the totality of where we, you know, spend our transportation, or spend money on transportation. You know, many improvements we make are funded, you know, through the capital program for DPW through the five-year plan, which, you know, includes tens of millions of dollars, and that's often how, you know, the calming improvements are made, how traffic signal improvements are made. So these are kind of additional funds to help supplement that or intervene when there's not another project going on. So I don't want to, not trying to disagree, I just think it's important to recognize.
Yeah, but here's the thing. In the next four to five to 10 years, Garden Street, Linian Street, and Maderos, maybe not Maderos, but I'll include it now, these are the only funds, type of funds that go there. We certainly know it for the next five years. And you see what I mean? It's abysmal, given where the, this is the only money that goes toward those kinds of streets. I agree, River Street, Gore Street, I get that, but we have to look at the, where there's speed, we have to look at it. And you know that one of our councilor's homes was hit? Speed through an intersection. And I just think we have to more broadly look at it. It isn't just the big streets. It might be intersection by intersection over time, but boy, we have to do a lot more. It's a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. So, again, I said this within the context of the great work and the great team that you have. We're impressed by that, and it's by far best team I've ever seen in my 40 years working for the city. I just think budgetarily, we got to rev this up. This is insufficient. I will be not voting for this particular budget because of that. I hope that will change.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I just say, most of these are in capital, so I certainly wouldn't mind revisiting this when the capital committee, but a lot of these are not part of the operating budget.
Yes, I realize that, but this is how you get things done, unfortunately.
And I might add, Mr. Chair, one of the things that we were trying to struggle in the development of this budget is the decrease in our normal parking fund revenues.
Yeah.
And clearly, we've continued the traffic calming program from property tax in the capital budget, where frankly, was funded from parking fund resources. So, again, one of the things we talked about earlier in the day was, you know, some of our revenues are anemic, hopefully to recover, and I guess all these things you just mentioned are funded from parking fund revenues, which has taken a hit, but we've been able to fund them in some part with other resources. But I would say that, and the amounts there have been consistent, that we've fudged in the pack. We can talk about it during capital, but just to put that in context in terms of available parking fund resources.
Thank you for saying that. However, these numbers aren't that far off of a typical year. So we've been doing this pretty much on and on, a little different, but pretty much on and on. And I realize scopes have increased over time, and I appreciate that, but we got to focus on where people live and where their kids live more. And again, I give credit to this department for asking about 20 mile-per-hour zones in our neighborhoods. That was a major victory for the city. This is what helps implement that kind of program, these issues right here. So, thank you. Let's see, there are two other councilors with questions. So, Councilor Nolan, followed by Councilor Zandervan.
Thank you, Chair Carlon, and thank you to Mr. Barr and your whole department and the city manager for working on a really, really difficult year. I was surprised to see the numbers of signs put up not being about triple from the prior years, because there were so many things going on with the pickup delivery, with the shared streets experiment. My question is that, in the past, we have discussed a possibility, and this gets to the question of the decline in revenues for parking. Often do we revisit various parking meters? In the book, it talks about it being anywhere from $1 to $3, depending on the location per hour, to increase that to in line with what would be more appropriate and maybe more in contention, depending on the area of the city, with garages that are around, is the question that I have.
Sure, through you, Councilor Carlon. We look pretty much every year as we go through our budget process, the meter rates. We have actually been planning to do an increase in Central Square and Kendall Square to $1.50 an hour, which is what our rate is in Harvard Square. We've put that on hold just pending COVID, because we felt that, you know, we didn't want to have that impact on local businesses. But I think as the, you know, I would hope, you know, and I haven't spoken directly with the manager about this, other than to just say that we're holding off for now, but at some point in the future, I think we would go back to implement that increase, you know, once we feel like it's not going to be the sort of, you know, last incremental impact we want to have on local businesses. So that's certainly something that we look at every year. I think there is some additional, you know, room to go up on that, but again, we want to be sensitive to the impact on local businesses and not have it become sort of a source of contention with those.
I mean, I think, you know, since my days of finance, I've probably talked about this two, three times a year, with every traffic director, in terms of making sure we're getting the most volume we can get. However, during COVID, to be very honest, with so many open spaces and with the timing, we thought it was incorrect, but, you know, we're facing a $1 million annual loss in parking fund. We're eating up the fund balance. So we want to increase revenues where we can, but we also understand the impact of increasing revenues in the wrong spot could have a reverse effect. But it's a great question, and it's something that we spend a lot of time thinking about, and we have delayed some permitting meter increases to make the vote for a while. But I think, again, the discussion will be when we should revisit that. And I know David's been in this loop as well.
And the other, to you, Mr. Chair, the other thing to consider is, while we might consider increasing meter fees, we are decreasing the number of meters we have in the city, which then has an impact on parking tickets that are written. So it's a complicated issue. It's not just raising fees, it's losing meters and losing ticket opportunities also.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's very hard. We really do want to support small businesses, and yet we also know the roads and the parking spots are often, if they're not in contention or anywhere near the same level of some of the private garages in particular in Kendall, then there's a disconnect that is something that we, I'm glad to hear it's addressed, and again, given the decline in revenues, it's something to look at. The other question is another thing that we've raised in the past, and I understand it is sometimes difficult. I am someone who does own a car. I drive it around. I am thrilled to be able to have my resident permit, but in the past, we had looked at, it's an incredibly low fee for an annual permit of $25. And one question that had been raised in the past, I understand it's COVID, and we might not want to increase, but a very not complex form of a, all right, the real cost is $50 each, but if you're low-income, just check this box, and yours is $25. You know, eventually, are we looking at that? Because that is something certainly for a number of people in the city, like myself, I'd be even happy to pay $50, but honestly, I don't think I would do it if it was just a voluntary checkup. But I would not, but I would certainly pay it if it was expected to be paid, if that makes sense. And I understand this also is complex. I am someone who believes for some people, $25 is a lot of money. We do not want to increase it for our low-income residents, and yet there should be a way to do this, quite simply.
I'll let Joe go into details, but from what we looked at so far, the implementation of trying to put a discount on this fee is going to be a lot of work, and I'm not sure if the work is worth the revenue we were going to bring in. And obviously, we've looked at increasing that, but again, like everything else, as we want to protect small businesses, we also want to protect residents who are facing some difficulty at times. So we're trying to find the right charge when we go up on all of these categories. So this has been the year we have probably financially, probably needs to do it. However, based on what we know people are facing, businesses are facing, we've taken the other approach to say, let's hold off in that session and delay the date. But it's certainly valid questions.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'd add, Councilor Carlon, through you, is that, you know, we certainly heard loud and clear from the council, you know, desire that if we are going to impose something along these lines, whenever the timing for that is right, that it needs to include some form of means testing. And as the manager said, there's some complexities to that, although I think that, you know, we're talking to some of our technology vendors to see if there's ways to simplify that. So I think it's possible, then that could make sort of the process easier on our end and for our staff. So I think it's definitely in our minds, it's not something we're pursuing immediately. Obviously, you know, as all the councilors know, we would need to come back to the council for approval of that, whether that's through the budget process or at some other time as an amendment. But it's certainly not something that we've lost track of, but not something we weren't necessarily planning to pursue in the immediate short term for the reasons that the manager mentioned.
Thank you all. Through the chair, back to all of you, thank you. And since my other questions were addressed, and just reading through this part of the budget, I'm glad to see many of those, the bus pilot, the trying to really accelerate the way that buses travel through the city. Right now, they're mostly empty, but I'm hoping they'll be very, very full, and that those lanes will give them even more incentive for people to fill them up. I mean, my other questions were addressed in the narrative. I thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zandervan is next. Councilor Zandervan, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I echo a lot of the comments and questions that have come before, and I appreciate the attention to the corner where I live, which is, you know, because of COVID, I've been home a lot in the last year, and it's like a daily near miss, and every once in a while there's an actual crash, and a lot of it does have to do with visibility and speed, as Councilor Carlon mentioned. So, and, you know, like the chair, I really appreciate the 20 mile-per-hour signs, but my question there is whether we are now done with that process of installation? And I've noted a couple of places where we still have conflicting signs, where it says 12, 20 miles an hour, but then a few feet yards down the road, it says 25. So where are we in that process?
I'm sure, and thank you for the question, Councilor. I'm actually going to ask Brooke to provide a quick update on the program. We are pretty much complete, but we are trying to address the issue that you've, that you mentioned.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. We are, as Joe mentioned, pretty much done with the installation of the 20 mile, 20 mile-an-hour signs. There may be some here and there that we need to make adjustments to, and we're in the process of doing that now. And as part of that, we will be looking to catch all of those conflicting signs and remove the 25 mile-an-hour ones as well.
Great, thank you. My next question is around the parking revenues, and I feel like we do have this conversation almost every budget cycle, and it revenues, and I feel like we do have this conversation almost every budget cycle, and it really does feel like a perilous way to make a living, especially as we are, I mean, we should be eliminating parking at, well, car storage, as I call it, as we move forward. So what's the alternative revenue mechanism here that we could be leveraging? Can we do an excise tax where we get more revenues based on the value of the car? You know, are there other ways that we can raise revenues that start to lessen our dependency on this car storage model that needs to be retired?
Sure, through you, Councilor Carlon, and I'm sure that have some additional thoughts on this, but I would say we're definitely, it's, you know, aware of it as an issue, it's an issue we've been talking about internally. Obviously, COVID has made it challenging to sort of think, you know, too far forward in terms of revenue, but it's definitely something that, you know, Guardi and I have spoken about, looking at, you know, maybe even doing a study of future revenue sources, what's happening around the country in terms of this issue, because it's, we're not the only city in the, in the country and the world that's facing the same challenge in terms of changes in, you know, rather from the traditional sources for transportation. So I think, you know, we, one that we are hopeful for, although again, is the governor to increase those rates, so hopefully those will recover in the future as we recover from COVID. So I think, you know, that is one sort of specific transportation source. But yeah, I obviously can't speak to, you know, things like excise tax and other sort of, you know, sources that I would assume require state approval, but I think we are very much aware of the issue and, you know, would be, are looking to come up with some proposals for how we might, you know, not just continue to increase our traditional sources of revenue, but actually for new sources of revenue that might, you know, be more sustainable in the future.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, again, I think Joe said it, any alternative revenue sources that require legislation would have to be done at the state level, and typically, those kind of conversations would need statewide initiation as opposed to just Cambridge-specific, which is difficult to do. As I mentioned earlier in the day, we benefit from the fact that the parking fund generates $20 million of revenue. That's a lot of money. Obviously, to replace that would have to come from other sources and might have to come from property taxes if we didn't have the parking fund revenue to use. So again, I think the new normal is that the parking fund revenue generation probably will not bounce back as quickly as we think until there's some increase in the activity that happens in various squares and the like, so, which then has a whole spiral effect in terms of Neil's tax and hotel motel tax and et cetera. So I think we've been privileged in the way that we've been able to have non-property tax revenues, but this is one that has taken a hit, and we've compensated for it in the FY22 budget, but other revenue sources are not as easily replaced, or I should say, the parking fund isn't easily replaced without remedies at the state level.
I mean, I would also follow up that, I do want to continue to say that the parking fund is self-sufficient. What we've been able to do is take related expenses in other departments and offset that. Those days are going to be fewer and far between. So the operation of the traffic and parking, but there's still enough revenue for that. It's the money we distributed to other departments that we could attribute to traffic and parking revenue, that is one that's been in this year here, that has been substituted by property taxes. So we've got some work to do, but I just want to do bring home that right now, the budget, what we bring in in revenue does, is self-sufficient. It's the additional use that we have for parking-related states that are taking the blow, and at this point, what we've been able to do is increase our taxes to support that.
Well, thank you for your comments. My feeling is nothing is more important than safety, and especially in neighborhoods where there are children. I know you agree, I'm not questioning that, and that if anything needs to be reduced, it's not safety. And I was just trying to make an observation of something that, I understand why the numbers are low, but those are not the numbers that should be low. And I just wanted to call out so that we can discuss it further, and thank you for your comments. And once again, Mr. Barr, thank you for your department's work. It's very noticeable, and we thank you for that. So, please.
Sorry, I did have one more question.
Counselors, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the discussion we had. I wanted to ask about the shared streets. I know that, you know, when we did the pilot and there were some issues with that, and the, Mr. Barr said that we would be trying some other approaches in more of the residential streets, and particularly in Eastern Cambridge. I'm eager to see that move forward, so I'm just asking whether any of that's contemplated in this budget and what that might look like.
Through you, Councilor Carlon, so the, we've not, I don't have anything specific in terms of saying we're going to do this or do that, but from a budgetary perspective, the, you know, we were able to do the shared streets program last year, and I think we want to do this year, we were able to do out of sort of our normal operating budget and using, you know, sort of existing staff. It was a bit of a stretch, and that was part of the challenge of it, particularly of COVID. But, so I think if we, if it did make sense for us to do additional, you know, shared streets or something different, you know, I don't think it's something we needed to provide additional budget for, because it can sort of fit in within our existing, you know, operating budget allocations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, and for the question. So just keep the process going. I'll move to forward the department's budget section to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Again, just for the record, the motion is to move the traffic and, to traffic, parking, and transportation department budget to the full city council with a favorable recommendation. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. And just for the record, the motion is to move the traffic and, to traffic, parking, and transportation department budget to the full city council with a favorable recommendation. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Zandervan.
No.
No. Mayor Siddiqui. Absent. Councilor Carlon.
No.
No. Absent.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we have, we had listed five more discussions, but the clerk notified me that budget policy related to financial summary and investment policy is actually on May 18th. So we have a whole week to prepare for that. So the remaining four are information technology, employee benefits, electrical department, and the clerk office. So the first is information technology that was pulled by Councilor Sabrina Wheeler. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Last year, when we were discussing the budget, we used this section to talk about municipal broadband. I think that was Councilman McGovern's idea, but it might have been someone else's. You know, we could definitely handle it in other areas, and it's certainly not a reflection on the IT department itself as wanting to see this in the budget. You know, last year, the council had voted to give the IT budget a negative recommendation because there wasn't funding for municipal broadband in the FY21 budget. There was then funding added for a feasibility study. I'd hoped last year we'd have the results of that study by now. I know the RFP has gone out, and that Councilor Nolan, I know there's a lot of work into it and the issues that there are with it, but there is not new funding, understanding, for municipal broadband in this budget. There's some funding for digital equity, which is good, but it's not the same thing as a municipal broadband network, and the pandemic is really highly needed for this. It's harder to do work, it's harder to stay connected with friends and family, harder to talk to your doctor if you don't have a reliable broadband connection. If I hotspots that we've done are a great help, but they aren't a substitute for this. So, I mean, I would make that motion to send this with a negative recommendation. Again, of course, happy to have other councilors speak on this as well.
Counselor, there's no money in because we got, there's no money in because we got an RFP out, and we're waiting to see what the cost is going to be. So as we said we were going to do, we have followed exactly what we said we were going to do when this budget was held hostage last year. Pat and Lee have done a phenomenal job getting us one. Once we get that number, as we've done with everything else, we will come back with a request for an appropriation. But we have committed to this, we are working on this, and I don't know why it's been so hard to convince the council that the work Pat and Lee have done has been exceptional in that we are moving it forward, but we don't have a bid yet. So once we get that, we will move forward with it. So I don't see how holding this budget hostage, when you won't get a number before you do this adopted, is the way to go, but I think I'd like to get Pat and Lee at least the way to go. But I think I'd like to get Pat and Lee at least have the opportunity to speak what we've done to help convince people that we are taking this incredibly serious.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond briefly?
Please.
I just, yeah, I wanted to note that the, saying that taking the budget hostage sort of implies that the council doesn't have to approve the budget. The charter is very clear that the council does have to approve the budget. This is completely within our authority. So, you know, I appreciate that there are dissenting opinions on this, but let's be clear about what the role of the council is here. We have every right to demand this and request this. So, you know, I'm sending this with a negative recommendation does not have indications on this. It's a way of registering dissent with the budget that we haven't moved as fast on this as I think residents are demanding we are. And I think it's, you know, perfectly within reason. I'm happy to hear from other members of the staff, but, you know, I don't think this is a crazy suggestion. So I'll go back.
Well, with that, Counselor, Co-Chair Simmons raised her hand first, followed by Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quickly, over the past few years, there's been persistent issues with regards to the city's audiovisual services when broadcasting city meetings and both internally in the Southland Chamber and externally, such as choppy video, audio issues, broadcast cutting out. Are there plans to address these issues in the F22 budget? And this is particularly important, depending on what we decide to do around continuing the Zoom meetings. I know that's sort of up in the air. Can we legally do it once there's no pandemic restrictions? But assuming that we can, the audio has to be better in here. So I'm just curious, through you, Mr. Chair, to the city manager or other appropriate individual, what, what are we doing around the poor, you know, from a fiscal perspective, what are we doing about the poor quality of communication that comes into the chamber, in and out of the chamber?
Hey, Pat?
Through you, Chair Carlon, to Counselor Simmons, we are in the process of making a number of improvements to the audiovisual equipment in the chamber and elsewhere in the city. There actually have been some recent upgrades in some of the hardware. I won't get into a lot of detail, but there are, there are encoders that are used to stream the meetings. They've been upgraded.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. What did you, I, there are something, there's a word that you said I could not quite understand. There are homers?
Toners.
Apologies, encoders?
Encoders?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't mean to get into too much of that.
No, it's quality of the sound.
Okay, yes. So, so yes, we recognize there are some improvements to be made, and we are working on those. I should also just add that I have the IT Department Assistant Directors, Mike Dugus and Eric Belford with me today, and do want to get into more details in any of these areas. But suffice to say, we have budgeted for some of those improvements, and we're continuing to, to make those.
Thank you. One other question. So, well, the council will wait to hear back from, from you, particularly if we take up this idea of continuing some remote access for the council and for people's participation. The only other question I wanted to turn my, turn my attention to, and this may be a more of a city manager question, I'm not sure. We talk a lot about municipal broadband, and I know we talk about it in the context of it being the be all and the end all. What I mean by that is, yes, it is important, and yes, we want to have as wide, as possible ability for people to use technology in a reliable, incredible way. And I know we do also have City View 22, but even that requires basic cable. And are we exploring any ways, like local radio stations, to be able to push our, our meetings out so that people that can't watch or don't watch, I mean, there are a few people out there in the world that don't have TVs, or don't, are not totally technology-driven, and certain kinds of radio abilities are free of charge. And I just wanted to note, in terms of being able to use our dollars to reach people in the broadest sense possible, do we have given any thought to that at all?
Through the chair, Counselor Simmons, we have given a lot of thought about the different ways in which we reach residents online and through cable. I have not heard of any discussion about radio as an alternative. So that, that would be something to, to investigate. At the moment, we've been at, again, ways to see and participate on the web, as has been true, particularly during COVID, but also previously, and as well as cable.
Thank you. I would hope, and maybe this is more of a policy order directed, to get more information, that as one of the many ways we reach out to people so that they can at least listen and passively participate in our meetings by being able to listen, see what goes on. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you both. Counselor Zondervan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to support my colleague and, and give a slight different reason why I'll be voting against this budget and certainly not any, you know, disrespect or, or negative feelings towards the IT department. I think they do a great job. It's simply that this is where the council has chosen to take a stand on municipal broadband. So in, in support of that, I will be voting no. But while, while I do appreciate the, the municipal broadband feasibility study, RFP, and I've read it thoroughly and carefully, to me, it doesn't quite address the, the ask that we made, because it really frames the question more broadly than, than just municipal broadband. It's really looking at, you know, how can we provide digital equity? How can we provide competition? And how does municipal broadband fit into that as a possible solution? And, and I understand, I think I understand why it was framed that way. But, but from my point of view, what, what we want is a feasibility study that says, is it feasible or not for us to build our municipal broadband network? And, and these other questions, in my mind, don't really belong in that feasibility study. Now, I, I'm still hopeful that we would get proposals that, that do, offer to do that part of the study, that, that would really look at, can, can we do a municipal broadband build or not? But, but again, the way the RFP reads to me, it doesn't just ask that question, and, and that's really the question we're looking to get into. And just anecdotally, you know, over the weekend, we had a large section of, of the city, you know, Comcast was, was knocked out, and there were a number of trucks working on Hampshire Street that I, that I noticed. And, you know, there was really no concession for, for us as, as residents who increasingly depend on this infrastructure in order to, you know, go types. And so that's why it's, it's really so important to consider municipal broadband solution, because it's, it's the equivalent in the 21st century of our road network. You know, we, we just need it to be there and to be reliable and to function so that we can, can use it at all times and not be dependent on the whims of, of for-profit corporations that may decide that, you know, for their profits, they might knock out the network for a bit. And too bad if that inconveniences the rest of us, let alone the fact that, you know, even when it is operating, the quality is quite low compared to what is possible and what we see in other parts of the world or even the country. So again, I do look forward to the responses to the RFP, but I do want to note that, that what we're looking for, what I'm looking for, is really the specific feasibility with municipal broadband built out.
So I don't know if it'd be helpful through the chair to speak a little bit about broadband. I don't know that there were any specific questions, but I, I would like to try to address some of these issues. As the council knows, I was just a couple of weeks to the job last year at this time when this issue was raised. However, my prior affiliation with the city was serving on the broadband task force. I've actually currently served on two other broadband task forces. I've worked on municipal broadband in two different countries, three different countries. I don't know that you could find someone who's more passionate about municipal broadband than me. And that also goes for digital equity. And those things are tightly related, but they are not exactly the same. If we think for a moment about digital equity, connectivity is one so-called leg of the stool. There's also devices, there are skills, there are that sort of thing. And our, the, the city's digital equity study, I think, did a great job to shed light on that. But in terms of municipal broadband, I, I think it would have been irresponsible to look at a connectivity model and solution without calling out the digital equity problem, that is to say, the connectivity portion in our city. And, and I will just say, as a broadband task force member all those years ago, when we had community meetings, when we got together with experts and talked through the city, it was quite clear, digital equity, or the digital vibe, as it was referred to then, was the priority of the city, and I think it is still today. These things are not in conflict. I, I won't speak directly to RFP because it is on the street. I think, I understand, we've had great feedback. There's a lot of concern more about what will the response be? And I just wonder if that's a little premature to see what we get. The, the RFP clearly does cover municipal broadband, in, in my view, as well as digital equity. I can't speak to the years that this has been an issue in the city entirely, but I can speak to the year I've been with the city. And I, I understand frustration that that RFP didn't go out right away, but I, I also believe firmly that it needed to be informed by that digital equity study. It needed to be informed by the work we were doing. And folks within my department, within purchasing, within Lee Giannetti's department, work very hard to try to pull together what is a very complex equation in terms of what sort of municipal broadband solution, what sort of approaches to digital equity can work for the city. So, you know, I will say that I'm sometimes surprised. I feel that we're most in furious agreement about these priorities, and yet it feels often like there's some disagreement. And, and I, I understand there are many approaches to any procurement or RFP, particularly one as complex as this, but it does seem to me we are doing what has been asked for by the, by the public and the council. And I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic that we can achieve something that may not feel perfect to everyone, but is going in exactly the direction that most of us want to go in. So just stop there.
Thank you. And through the chair, thank you for that answer. And I do agree that the RFP covers municipal broadband and I guess the, the concern. And, and, you know, by the way, we've heard extensively from Upgrade Cambridge, which really was founded to concern itself with this question and, and they are of the opinion as well that the problem isn't that it doesn't cover municipal broadband. The problem is that it is, is broader than broadband. It covers all these other issues. And, and I agree that digital equity is incredibly important, and I appreciate the city's efforts on that. But I do think they are separate. They're, of course, also connected. But separately, we need to just continue to address those problems, and, and we don't necessarily need a feasibility study for that. Whereas for municipal broadband, we clearly need to understand whether or not that is a feasible thing for us to, to build out. And, and that's really the question that we're asking. So we're not asking, you know, is it feasible for us to, to solve or provide for digital equity? We're, we're saying, we want to just do that, like, you know, take care of that problem. And then separately, but at the same time, let's understand if we can do municipal broadband, because we believe that's a better solution and ultimately needs to happen. So I think that's where the disagreement is coming from. And again, I appreciate the response and, and the work that's gone into it, and, and certainly acknowledge Mr. McCormick's expertise. And I do hope that, that we ultimately, despite, you know, some of the rough patches, will get to, to where we're all trying to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, and Mr. McCormick for educating us a little further. The next speaker is, Nolan is first. Sorry, I had it the other way around. Counselor Nolan is next, followed by Counselor McGovern, and then I believe then the vice.
Thank you, Chair Carlon, and thank you to Mr. McCormick, to Mr. Giannetti and the city for moving this forward. It's a really difficult issue and topic, because we're all frustrated. This has taken a lot longer than any of us expected. And while I understand it, it's also really, really hard, because even the digital equity study, yes, could we come up with 10 reasons why it's legitimately was delayed more than a year? Yes. On the other hand, it was, which meant it wasn't ready. And could we understand therefore why the RFP, which was supposed to be drafted last summer and out by September, wasn't even put out until April? Can we understand it? Yes. But it, it constantly puts us in a very difficult situation. And while I understand it, it's just still, it, it doesn't make it frustrating, and it would be really good if we had, could in the future avoid this by really understanding. This was such a huge priority for the entire council that we actually took in the budget last year. And so that makes it particularly challenging to, to, you know, I don't want to be critical on this, but I, I need to be critical, because it's put us now in a situation where we're frustrated. Yes, as Mr. McCormick said, we were, this RFP, what he said was, it, it does what we were asked to do by the public and the council, and yet we're hearing from the public in Upgrade Cambridge, who has hundreds and hundreds of people who, while they may not, I do think they represent a majority of people in the city, have said this really does meet the mark. We just, for the council's benefit, both the mayor, and particularly the vice mayor, and I had, had several different meetings over the course of, of starting, I think, last August about this and really pushing forward. And we had one recently after the RFP was out and expressed some of the frustration. And I, we have been asked by many people who know far more about this and are very technically expert, including people like Mr. McCormick, who have done studies and very familiar with broadband networks, is somewhat confusing and muddled and doesn't actually do what we asked for, which is a very clear, ironclad kind of study that says, all right, you want, you should do municipal broadband. Here's four different options. We're not going to recommend any. We're just going to lay them out and tell you the, the feasibility of what it would take and what it would cost, and then you all decide. And, and that's what doesn't seem to be, again, from people who have read this RFP, that that will be coming out of this. And I also agree that, yes, digital equity is obviously very important, but the digital equity study laid out, most of the work, most of the recommendations in that study are totally separate from this. We can, we can and we will move forward on addressing those, but we really do need to understand where we're going with this study. One of the things we had wondered once this was out, I really wish we had had more input into this. I know there's laws around purchasing, but I also know there's, you can always bring in, to be involved in a process. You can do it under a legal banner. And I just, I, I'm frustrated that that didn't happen here enough. So now we're facing that, that is really troubling for those of us who, who have a clear sense that what we do want is a sense of municipal broadband, not just options for citywide service, an option for municipal, a, a core principle of municipal broadband. We also know that since there had been some concern about confusion, do we have a sense of what the questions were and where we're going, and how quickly we can make sure that we address some of the concerns that we and many people who are experts in this, I reached out to a couple of different experts who know about that. They read the RFP and said, this is really confusing what the city even wants. So I think the question is, do, we, we also were, I believe, the vice mayor can correct me, we were told there would be questions and that that would give us a lot of information about how this is being interpreted and what kinds of people, what questions that possible respondents had would, would give us a sense of whether this was actually going to get us to where we are. But I haven't heard a report on that, which would have been nice to have if the, if question period has concluded.
Sorry. So the, the question through you, Chairman Carlon, is about questions in response to the to the RFP?
Right. We had discussed that at our meeting, and you had said, let's wait until then, because that will tell us a lot about how people are viewing this, is my recollection of that meeting, is my notes.
I didn't say that, but it might have come up. I think the purchasing director, Liz Unger, is here and might want to, if she is available, address the question of questions, so to speak.
Because those are public, right? Questions become a matter of public record, so.
I will allow the speaker to speak, but again, this is a budget hearing. I know this is a big issue, it's a big issue for me, but my goal is to run a budget hearing. So if you would like one of your people to talk a little bit about it, that's fine, but let's get back on to the budget in a moment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the question period has ended on the RFP. The answers to those questions will be posted via addendum, as it had been laid out in the RFP, so that all potential proposers will have an opportunity to see those answers. I would just caution what we discuss here in detail about the RFP itself, so as to not taint the opening competitive process, and put information out there that some potential proposers, potential proposers may not be aware is available to them now, may not be aware is available to them now via this particular hearing. That would be my one caution and concern, to not taint the process itself.
I would think we should take that caution and concern very seriously, because it could have major ramifications. And I know often, the council doesn't always feel the advice they're given by the city is the way to go, but I would hope in this matter, based on all the time and effort we've put into this, that they recognize that the purchasing agent has a very strong opinion on this, strong opinion on this.
If we can't answer some of the questions about the IT department and the concerns about RFP, it would, I hope, and I hope Mr. Gianetti and Mr. McCormick and I have also spoken directly with the city manager about, again, what we're all hearing about concerns about, about this critically important process. But if that ends the discussion, that ends the discussion.
Councillor, we could hardly hear you. Could you just summarize what your last statement was?
Yeah, I understand we've all been working on this really, really hard, and if we can't then move forward on understanding that question I asked, I hope, and Mr. McCormick and the city manager and Mr. Gianetti do know my concerns, I have been transparent about them, expressing them over the last few weeks, since this came about, and certainly over the last few months, because this is, it's a utility, we need to do it, and we need to basically have this in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mallon, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to echo some of, one of my colleagues said that this doesn't, the RFP as put out does not ask the questions that we asked, which was, how much would this cost for us to implement municipal broadband in the city of Cambridge, with a few different options of what that would look like, whether that was a full expansion, partial expansion, et cetera? And I understand that the digital equity piece, that there is, it is a three-legged stool, and, you know, the hard devices and the skills are definitely something that was covered in the digital equity study with specific recommendations. The RFP is out, it's in the middle of the process, as Ms. Unger just stated. We can't talk about it here to keep the process moving forward and not taint it. But I also am frustrated that the RFP went out without any input from many of us, even looking at it. I understand Upgrade Cambridge was not asked to participate in formulating the RFP, and we had a long conversation about that. My question is now, what happens once those responses come back for the RFP? How does the council in any way participate in the responses from the respondents to try to figure out how to move forward? Because I think what you're hearing is, everyone is not crazy about the RFP the way it went. I would hate for the RFP respondents to come back, we choose somebody, and it's going off in a direction that, again, we don't want, that we are not going to feel comfortable with. We're not going to get what we asked for, which I think is going back years, right? Like, there was a study that said that it was going to be hundreds of million dollars to implement municipal broadband. The question really is, is that, is that right? And if so, are we going to make that choice? I don't know that we're going to find that out, coming back with the RFP that we've put out, which does seem to just ask for an array of options, which we have never discussed here at the council. So, I guess my real question, as it relates to the budget, is we are going to be spending money on this service, right? We put out a request for proposals, we're going to be paying a consultant to do this. In terms of the budget, how is the council going to be participating in those responses and picking a respondent? My guess is, we are not. But that's my question.
You are not. That's not the role of the city council, I don't know who wants to hear that. Obviously, our intent is to meet the guidelines of what the city council asked us to do. I have confident that Pat and Lee have sent this on that objective to do that. I think, let us get the RFP, let's see where we're at, and really decide where we're missing this. Because I think, based on Pat's experience and what he has stated, I think he knows what the council wants. I know there was no intention not to give the council what they want, so why don't we wait and see where we end up with this? But the whole point here was to get to where the council wanted, and I'm still not sure that's not the case. And I'm not sure why council feels so strongly that it isn't, because I don't think Pat and Lee feel that way. And I would hope we could come to a conclusion, but I don't know what else to say, other than, I thought we would be on this point, and I have confidence in the team that we put together to put this in, that will address the concerns the council had. And I don't know if Pat and Lee want to add anything.
Can I just respond, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I think, Mr. Manager, what you're hearing is, from the majority of the members who have spoken already, is that this RFP is not what we wanted. And it does not address the concerns that we had raised over the past, especially over the past year. So, if there is no way for the council, as you said, that is not the role of the city council, to review RFPs and to pick a vendor, our only choice, our only piece of this is like, putting forth what we want, so that the RFP can be written in a way that we end up with an outcome that we had envisioned. But now we're at a place where that horse has left the barn. So I'm just trying to figure out, at this point, what we can do.
I guess, I don't think Pat and Lee feel that's the case, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think we have to have that discussion, but I don't know what else to do, other than, Pat, do you want to try to answer why?
Could I just, this is councillor Carlon, could I just add something?
Yep.
In my business, architecture, urban design, I get requests for proposal, I used to, all the time. And on occasion, I would get an addendum that said, change the scope, add this, whatever it was. Possible, or are we beyond that point in your schedule?
If it's appropriate, through you, Mr. Chair, we are not beyond that point in time yet. I would say that, for a matter of best practices, one should give the least minimum 48 hours to issue an addendum, and give potential respondents an opportunity to incorporate whatever is included in that addendum and their final proposal. Depending on the complications involved, however, with the addendum, more than that best practice time may be warranted, and I would certainly defer to Patrick and Lee on that particular element.
Yes, I guess, I would just add, and I think it is challenging to discuss this without getting into the specifics and potentially compromising the process. So, I would say that I don't think there's complete agreement on how the RFP has been characterized. I think it does remain to be seen how the responses will be in terms of the specificity. But, you know, if it's a matter of taking it to look at an addendum, I suppose we can do that. I will say that, I don't know that the council has heard this, but there has been a lot of positive response to the RFP as well. You know, and I'll take something, because this is copied to a dozen people, it was from Upgrade Cambridge, and the last line was, while I was pointing out some differences of opinion, the last line was, anyway, there's a lot of good work in the RFP, and I thank you and those on your team who contributed to it. It advances the effort in important ways, and that's truly important. That was sent to a large group of stakeholders around the city, nonprofits, from Upgrade Cambridge, and as we were sharing the RFP as well as the digital equity study. So, I just wanted to make sure that people understand, there's quite a bit of commonality, even as we look at some, you know, very legitimate questions around the margins of how exactly this sort of thing is done. So, I hope that's helpful.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I add a comment?
Please do, Lee.
You know, I appreciate the discussion, and, you know, I do want to acknowledge the council frustration that some of you had, that have articulated, you know, something that has really stuck with me, and I know I've mentioned this before, one of the members of the broadband task force had always mentioned that, you know, we don't have an engineering problem, we have a goal problem. You know, when we talk about municipal broadband, there are many different systems that you can build, but it's not a one-size-fits-all. At the end of it, you still need to articulate, what goals are you trying to do with a municipal system? Does that mean you're going full fiber to the home, or does that mean you're just doing a backbone? There are many different iterations, and something that, and I think is what may be causing some of the angst with this, is we have intentionally prioritized as, in calling out, digital equity as one of the key goals that we want to solve. If we're going to be exploring a municipal broadband system, Pat and I feel very strongly, and I think it's based on council orders that have been passed, both related to do a municipal broadband, but the policy orders that you passed related to digital equity and the goals, is that digital equity should be front and center in building a system. I don't think we want to go through and explore how we could potentially build a municipal system, and then back in, how could this help our equity goals? I think we start with equity, and that's where we're trying to come from. And we don't have any preconceived notions about what that type of system should look at, and that's what we're really trying to get. So I think that is important, and that may not be the approach that I'm hearing, that the council wants us to prioritize equity upfront in terms of the municipal broadband, and if we missed that aspect, I'm sorry for that, but I think if you really read through the RFP one more time, you will see, it is looking for municipal broadband options. It is in there. But we were very intentional about making sure that we were clear, that digital equity was the first part that we really want to start with, and have from a framing, and then move out from there. So I feel strongly about that, and I just really want to get out that if that is not the intent or the council's wish for us to really have that strong focus on equity, then I apologize for completely missing that.
Well, I'm going, we have other councillors who wish to speak, and unintentionally, I overlooked councillor McGovern, and I apologize, councillor, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, given all you've dealt with today, it's okay. I am really torn on this. And, you know, last year, and councillor Sabrina Wheeler mentioned that, or it was, I was the one that suggested not voting the IT budget, maybe I was, but I did vote against it at the time, which is the first time I've ever done such a thing. And the reason I did it was because I felt we needed to send a strong message that we needed this process to move forward. And, Mr. McCormick, you are correct, this predates you by many years. And I guess before, and I'd like to hear from councillor Sabrina Wheeler, who mentioned, you know, who wants to recommend, you know, not moving this forward favorably. I want to, I'm not sure what doing that accomplishes this time. I think last time it was important, and I felt strongly about doing it. I'm not sure what we get out of it this time, though. And what I don't want to do is delay it any longer. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the manager, you know, again, I don't, you and I have talked about this, you know, I get accused of being too easy on the city, but I think for the most part, the city does things really well. When I don't think the city does something well, I say it, and I don't think we did it well. I don't understand why this took so long. Other RFPs get out much faster, and they're complicated. And I'm not even talking about within the last year, I'm talking two-plus years. I mean, councillor Nolan's been, you know, most recently, you know, leading this charge, but we've been talking about this before she was even on the council. And, you know, to say that, you know, the city has, you know, made this a priority and put this forward, I don't see it. But we're here. You know, I'm further frustrated that, just a few weeks ago, maybe even less than that, on the news, we see that Salem, Massachusetts, is moving forward with installing fiber through a private company, that is going to take two and a half years to install, at no cost to the city, because of the arrangement they made. Salem, Massachusetts is 18 miles compared to us, we're far more dense, but we don't, they're larger. And they took, you know, less than a year to put out an RFP, make an agreement, and there are shovels in the ground. And here we are, several years into the process, and we have an RFP that people don't, is, maybe not going to get us any closer to really where we want to be. And so, you know, look, sure, we can vote the IT budget down. Again, I don't know what that does. You know, if we voted down in the final vote, we revert back, I believe, to the current budget, which would eliminate any increases or things. I don't know what that actually does, right? We send a message, but I don't know what it actually does, and if it's actually going to be helpful. So I don't know, I'm still struggling with this as we talk about it. But I do agree with my colleagues that what I was hoping for was an RFP that talked about different options for municipal broadband, whether or not it made sense for the city, or what were those, what could those options be, so we can then debate? Is it to do something like Salem is doing? Is it to do something, you know, different? I'm not sure we're going to get that out of this RFP. And I agree with Mr., with Lee about, you know, he had said in his earlier comments about, you know, that the council, you know, that the council had asked for different options. I think he's right, but I don't think we're getting it. And I think, and whether there should have been two separate RFPs or two separate, Mr. McCormick is right, and as other people have said, digital equity and municipal broadband are clearly linked in some ways, but not in all ways. And I don't know, if we only wanted to do digital equity, would, could we reach some sort of agreement with Comcast that says, you know, we'll pay for everybody in, below a certain income level to have internet service? I don't know, maybe that's a solution. That is different than what we're talking about with municipal broadband. And so, you know, I think, I don't know what voting down the IT budget actually gets us, and I'd like to hear councillor Sabrina Wheeler's goals, doing that? Like, what's the point, right? Where does that hope to get us? Is the hope to bring the RFP back and redo it? Is the, and again, that's not even our decision, that's the city manager's decision. What is it, what's the, you know, where are we trying to get to? But I would be remiss if I didn't express my displeasure with where we are with this, a year later. a year later. You know, the RFP just came out, almost 10 months after we voted down the IT budget last time. So, I'm just very disappointed in this one, I am. And, you know, I'm happy about a lot of other things, but this isn't one of them. And, you know, I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to-
Can I just jump in first?
Well, yeah, but I would want to hear from Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, what's, what's the hope here, because I'm really on the fence.
Well, I just want to tell you-
The budget is going to get us somewhere? I did it last time, I'll do it again. It's not going to get us anywhere, and it's just a statement, but it doesn't lead to anything. I'm not really, I'm not really sure I want to do that dance again, so I'd like to hear sort of what the end goal is.
I'd like to tell you what it is going to do, because a year ago, I had an option that I tried to move forward, and I'm sorry it took so long, and I'm sorry we're at this point. What it will do this year is the council cannot reduce the IT budget specifically, they will have to reduce the finance budget, because that's the level you appropriate at. So it'll reduce it by $10 million, and then at that point in time, come July, I will have to figure out how I would live with a budget that's $10 million shot. That usually means people, that usually means lack of services, and that's the reality of it. Now, I know that's not what the council wants, but the time I had a way out of this, I'm not sure I have a way out of this this time, and the reality will be, if you cut $10 million from the finance budget, I cannot legally overexpend that budget, I will have to reduce people in the finance department. We'll have to have a long discussion with my team on how we're going to do that, but legally, I cannot overexpend the budgets, and I will not. So I do think these are very serious ramifications, I'm sorry we got to this point. I know it took a while, a year ago, to get this moving, I really thought at this point in time, we have gotten to moving, Pat and Lee have made this a priority, I know it took long, but it was a lot of work getting there, and I just don't know how touch, cutting $10 million from the finance department is going to get us in any better place with this project. Last year, I, how touch, cutting $10 million from the finance department is going to get us in any better place with this project. Last year, I certainly could understand it, I didn't agree with it, but I understand why it was done, and we had a solution that I think allowed the budget to be passed. I'm not quite sure, I have a solution, what I would even be asked to do in order for this not to happen, other than the fact that, reality is, if it does happen, it could have major ramifications on the finance department's budget.
Could I ask a question again on such RFPs? There's a, a meeting, and maybe this has already happened already, where interested people come, and Ms. Unger and Mr. McCormick are there, and they can answer questions. Has that, has that meeting occurred? Is it going to occur? I guess not. No response?
Liz?
Liz? I'm not sure what happened to Liz. Pat, do you want to address it?
That, that meeting hasn't occurred. I was hoping that, through you, Chair Carlon, I was hoping Liz would address, because again, I'm concerned about how we, about the process, that's all. In fact, I was going to ask Liz if it, if it were permissible to even read out some of the deliverables of the RFP, because, because I do think there's some misunderstanding of, of what's expected in response, but again, I'm not sure, I just do not want to do anything that compromises the processes.
Liz has joined us.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Chair, I would just ask the council to reread through the tasks as they have been laid out in the RFP with an eye toward the details that they are seeking answers to. So I would just redirect the council to the tasks as they are laid out in the RFP without going into too much specificity, to see if that helped alleviate some of their concerns.
Ms. Unger, I know this is a living hell kind of thing for your position when politics get involved, but hearing what Mr. McCormick said and what you said and the manager, maybe we're closer than we think, and I hope that once we all review it again, we feel that way. Thank you for your-
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, because I feel the same way, because our intent is to get to where the council wants to be.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor McGovern, please.
We sort of, you know, one of the, one of my other points or one of my other questions was through you to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, and this is specifically about the budget.
Please.
Is, is to understand, I know he wants to recommend a negative recommendation, and I'm trying to understand, before I make a decision, where he hopes that leads us. Is it just about a statement, or is it, is there a point to doing it that he thinks might get us further along? Because I don't, this year, last year, I was willing to do it to make a statement, this year, I'm not sure that I am, I think the statement's been made, and I'm just trying to better understand what he wants.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor-
I didn't mean to cut the line, I know other councillors have their hands up, so I can go at the end, actually.
Why don't you go ahead, Counselor?
Apologies to the councillors, and to the response to Counselor McGovern's question, you know, I think we heard from staff right now that what we could do is an addendum to the RFP that clarifies the council's intentions, that this is about a plan for municipal broadband and how much it would cost. As, you know, the city manager and staff said, we can't, as the council, micromanage city operations and what ends up being issued and what ends up being done, but we do have the power right here over the budget and which departments we recommend favorably or unfavorably. So at this point today, we're just saying, we send the IT department to the full council with a negative recommendation for the budget ultimately, you know, we could say, there has to be funding for the RFP that we're satisfied with, or we're not going to move forward with the budget. That's not the vote we're taking right now today. And last year, when we voted this department negatively, it didn't guarantee that there was going to be an RFP, but we did it anyway, and we took us in the right direction. And I'm hoping that if we take this step today, we'll see another step in the right direction. The last piece, I was just thinking of the, the sort of the RFP focusing on equity versus municipal broadband, and I just think of it as, you know, if the city council had issued an RFP for a school building, or had asked for an RFP for a school building, and the RFP that ended up getting issued focused on school equity, like, school equity is great, we just should talk about it, that's, that's not what we had asked for, and we have talked about our digital equity, we're going to keep talking about digital equity, we need an RFP for municipal broadband, so I think that's the message we're trying to send today, and I think there is a specific piece, and that's an addendum clarifying that, that we can get to.
I, I do want to say, this is a dangerous message at the expense of city employees, and if that's the game we're going to play, we're trying to say we want to work with the council. I want to go on record and say I totally oppose that, because I'm not going to support something that risks me having to fire a layoff of city employees, because an RFP isn't perfect, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair? I think I still have the floor.
Please, please.
I would just say that, you know, last year, and I, and we, you know, last year, when we initially voted unfavorably on the IT budget, we eventually voted favorably to pass it. So whatever, you know, if it were to be forwarded negatively today, that does not mean that it's going to be voted negatively when we adopt the budget, and we can adopt it later if we so choose, so, but it is good, you know, I asked the question as to what the implications would, would be, and we got that answer. You know, I would, through you, Mr. Chair, to the manager, you know, I think you've heard, and, and maybe Ms. Unger or Mr. McCormick, you know, I think you've heard pretty clearly from a majority of the councillors' point that, you know, we think there needs to be some, you know, some addendum or some amendment or something on this RFP. Is that, is that possible? And if that is possible, are you, could, are you prepared to make the commitment to do that today? Because I would, if that is possible and that can be done, I would like to not vote this down, and, and I hate to get into that power struggle, but I think you've heard pretty clearly that we need to see something different, something more. What are the possibilities of that, and are you committed to that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I need to talk to my team about that. Obviously, it'd be a plus to work this so that the council would be satisfied. What role now we can do to make that adjustment, I'm not sure. So at this point, I would say I will do everything I can to try to, in a place that makes this group happy. But again, if it doesn't, and the votes know, it will be at the expense of city employees, and I don't want to take that lightly, I don't want people to think that's a trek. That is reality, because I'm not going to overexpend the budget. So I just want the council to understand, if I can't work this up, that they will be telling city employees, because of the broadband not being able to work out, they will be losing the, so, yeah, we want to play hot ball, I have to tell the facts. So I want to work this up, but not risking a no vote on a final adoption night, meaning potential layoffs come July 1st. So I'm all in, but I don't know if I have the answer. The last one was an easy one, and we were able to respond quickly. I don't have a answer that I am sure is going to satisfy the council with this. So I'm in a difficult spot. If I did, I tell you, yes, let's make it go away. I don't. Well, I do everything I can to, yes, I will commit to that.
So, Mr. Chair, just, you know, I think I'm going to reverse what I did last year in that I think I will vote in favor today, but that doesn't mean I'm going to vote in favor next time, and I will give you the opportunity, Mr. Manager, to act, to do an addendum, to do something that addresses his needs, but I will also say this, if you don't, and we vote against the IT budget later down the road, it's just going to be on the council's shoulders that positions will be lost. This is a two-way street, and so-
Again, I'm not sure what I can do, so I understand that, but I can only do what I can do, and I-
I hear you, but this is, this is a two-way street, and I will give you the benefit of the doubt for this vote, but I, I need to see something better before a final vote, and I don't want to lose, and nobody does, and that's, you know, it is a reality, but again, it's, the council has to work with you, but you got to work with us, too, and I don't want to get into this power struggle every time.
We talked through the chair, and I know you're having a great conversation among the both of you, but I-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to close out on this, Mr. Chair. I just wish that we weren't having this discussion around this RFP.
I understand.
I wish we had it several months ago, thank you.
I thank you for bringing up that this is not the final vote, and that allows us a little more time to work this out and yet move forward. So, Madam Mayor, I know I stepped on your toe by asking a question that you had on your mind, is there anything else you would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no worries. You know, I think I generally agree with what's being said. I think, back to Lee's point, I think there just wasn't a meeting of the minds on some of this, and I think, I, for one, I completely agree on the digital piece, and I think what you've heard from the council in last year's conversation, you know, they're intertwined, but they're also not mutually exclusive, and so, or something like that. So I think they're two separate issues, and I think we tend to conflate, and I have gone through the RFP, and I think, I won't mention it, but there are some sentences that I think do speak to, I think, what the council, you know, has espoused and so forth, but I also see how perhaps there, you know, there, perhaps another further conversation, which is Counselor was Carlon, and now Counselor McGovern's around this, to really think about where the meeting of the minds should happen on this, because it will ultimately be, be better for everyone in the end if we can get on as close to the same page as possible, because what you're hearing is, there is this disconnect. So I think all I'll say is, you know, I think I agree with what Counselor McGovern is saying around this, and I had another point, but I think it lost me. So if I, if that point comes back to me, I'll raise my hand, but I'll yield for now.
Please, thank you. That usually happens at my age, not at your age, forgetting a point.
Unfortunately.
Killer.
Yes.
So Counselor Zondervan is next, then Vice Mayor Mallon, and then Counselor Nolan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Cale.
Again, I, I think the conversation obviously will continue, but again, to remind everybody what the purchasing agent said about getting too deep in the weeds about addendums and what that may or may not include, because I wouldn't want to put ourselves in a position where we just have to pull the whole thing back and reissue it, so I would just caution everybody to be a little bit careful about their public comments about addendums and the like, just so that we stay on solid ground, please. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for reminding us of that, it's important. With that in mind, we have Counselor Zondervan, Vice Mayor Mallon, and Counselor Nolan. Counselor Zondervan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the, the request, but unfortunately, I don't think I'm aware enough of what the, what the rules and boundaries are here to know whether or not I'm exceeding them, but I would like to offer a slightly different analogy from my colleagues, because I think the, the challenge, at least for me, is that it isn't so much that the RFP is asking for something different from what we want, it's asking for more options than we want. So by analogy, if we asked for a feasibility study on having a municipally-owned electrical utility for Cambridge, which of course we used to have, but we don't have anymore, and then we got an RFP that said, you know, that's one option, and we can look at that, but there's also other options, like we could have Eversource continue to provide electricity for everybody. And that's basically what we got, right, is that we, the RFP, as I understand it, is asking for, yes, feasibility of municipal broadband, but also other options to provide digital equity and connectivity across the city, and, and what I think you're hearing from the council, and certainly what I'm trying to communicate, is that we don't want those other options. We, we want you to address digital equity however you need to and can best do at the moment, and, and then we want a feasibility on municipal broadband. We, we don't want a study of whether Starry or Comcast can actually address the broadband question in Cambridge, because so far, for decades, they have not been able to do it, and we have no faith that they will be able to do it. So, so we're asking for a simple RFP that tells us whether and how we can do municipal broadband in Cambridge. And the answer may be we can't, or the answer may be that, you know, there's three options and we have to pick, but that's the only question we want to ask. We don't want to ask a question about, can Comcast solve the problem, can Starry solve the problem, can we do digital equity some other way besides municipal broadband? We're not trying to ask those questions. So I am familiar enough with the procurement process to tell you how to remedy it, but if there's a way to narrow the question so that it's asking exactly what we want, then I think we can move forward in much more agreement than what we have now.
Mr. Chair, I would agree, I just think, and again, I agree with Counselor Zondervan's here, I think we're going on a path here where it's difficult to know what we can or cannot say, and the more we talk about this RFP, the closer we're going to be saying something we shouldn't, and I know that's nobody's intention, so I am getting wary that if we're going to have these conversations, we're going to put ourselves in a difficult situation, but I know they're important, and I wish I had a better answer, but I think if the next three speakers are addressing the RFP, it's just without knowing what we can or can't say, we could be putting ourselves in a difficult-
Okay.
It's no one's fault.
I, I believe Counselor McGovern had a great point, in that this is not the final vote on the budget. That gives us a window of time where we can talk about this with the manager, independently, together, a few of us, and we can work out whatever needs to be worked out, or we have that final vote. I think Counselor McGovern's point is the good one. Now, I also agree, knowing quite a bit about RFPs, that the city's absolutely right, and the key is that one candidate who's applying learns something that others do not through our discussion. Maybe it's what the council favors, for instance, and that's unfair, and can, we can't keep talking about that. So with that in mind, I know the Vice Mayor and Counselor Nolan will not do that in their final comment, and then I'm going to move the vote. Vice Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly will not talk about the RFP, but I will agree with- I certainly will not talk about the RFP, but I will agree with some of the comments that were made before. I think we, we do have some time to work on this, given where we are with the budget and where we are with the RFP process. I do have a question, though, it's kind of a, more of a budget question than a RFP question. So I'm, I'm sure everyone's excited about that. In terms of if we did vote down the budget, not just for the IT department, but for any department, what would happen was, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, is that we would vote every month on a 1/12 budget for the finance department?
I'd have to, if you're voting to eliminate a dollar amount, that budget is reduced from the total, then we would have to make recommendations. But the immediate fact is that dollar amount is reduced from the budget. So come July 1st, if there were recommendations to figure it out, now remember, free can not be certified, so it will be tricky to then add back. It is up to me until that money is restored to make sure that we do not overexpend budget because legally I can't let that happen. So you're not voting a 1/12 budget. If you were doing that, you'd leave one month in and then you would say, okay, we will revisit. That's a little different. Now, obviously, a one-month budget is tricky because if people do have to be laid off, we're going to have to figure that out. But that's, that would be a different type of rescission. It would be leaving a one balance in there. But a rescission of a dollar amount means that that number is no longer in the total and I have to figure out over a year if that number is not added back, how I don't overexpend that budget. And I, I'd have to take some time to figure what that would mean. But at some point, if, if we did one month and we came to the next month, we certainly could do it that way. That's tricky, but that is another way of looking at it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had a clear understanding of what it would like if we didn't vote for the budget, which I'm certain and confident that after this conversation, everyone's sort of on the same page about where we need to with this RFP in order for it to move forward in a way that we all feel comfortable with. But I did want to make sure I understood the process around the budget, what would happen next, and then the one-month budget that would move forward. Because I certainly think that that's something that maybe not everybody understands and it's just, it's important to talk about when we're talking about maybe not voting per budget. So I did want to, one quick thing I want to say is I just wanted to respond to Mr. Giannetti, who said something like, you know, maybe he was misunderstanding that the council didn't want digital equity at the forefront of, of a municipal, municipal broadband study. I think I've been very public about this. I think in our meetings, I've been very, very open and upfront, the fact that digital equity does need to be at the forefront of our work with the municipal broadband. I think everyone, I've been very clear, I just want, I noted publicly that maybe the council did not want digital equity to be at the forefront of this work. And I just want to be on record publicly that I certainly have always thought that it should be at the forefront. And that's why I am so passionate and adamant that we need to do this work correctly and make sure that we get the desired effect. So I'm going to yield the floor at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I think all of us really feel digital equity is absolutely up there. The question might have been focused broadband, but that was what was behind a lot of it. Now, I've been told that two councilors have to leave at 5:00. So, and we, I have still to speak, Councilor Nolan, and then I will call a vote. And then we have three more departments. And the clerk's office is the last and he's beginning to worry. So we, we have to move quickly. Councilor Nolan, your final comments on the issue.
Thank you, Councilor Carlon. Thank you, all my colleagues. I, I do want to echo what the Vice Mayor said, however, I might phrase it somewhat differently, that of course we all want digital equity and we want municipal broadband. And they are, you can have both. It's like saying, do you want to feed people food or give them a house? It's not a question. We do need both. It meant that the goal is digital equity suggests the goal is not municipal broadband first front and center. And I think that's part of the conflation here that is difficult that the mayor and others have talked to. I also want to point out, it's critically important that we talk, how do, how are we defining equity? It's not just about very low-income people, it's also about middle-class people totally struggling. It's also about small business owners who are paying $500 a month for access to internet, for utilities that they are struggling to pay for. So it's really important that we keep the focus on municipal broadband means literally every single person in the city. I, I do want to respond to something Mr. McCormick said about Upgrade Cambridge that does recognize the, the work that went into this RFP. However, they are the ones asking us to withdraw this RFP. That doesn't mean we're going to, but their ask was, we've gotten many, many emails from the leaders of Upgrade Cambridge saying, the city must withdraw the RFP because it is not meeting the goals of the city, which is something I certainly take very seriously. And as Councilor McGovern said, this issue predated me. You know, this has been on, I think years ago when I was on school committee, Digital Divide was there. So let's really work together and come together to finally get answers on municipal broadband. And I will also say I have learned a lot. The folks at Upgrade Cambridge who have said, as Salem was mentioned earlier, I'm not sure if ultimately that will be a city-owned network. However, there are other cities. It is not only cities that own their own municipal light plants, which we could consider in the future, but we're not talking about that. There are other examples of cities that have done this and have brought, we, we could bring them in and have them talk about it, but this is, this is not something that is totally unique and it is something critically important for us to do. I feel for myself that I will be voting no on this. I am hoping that in the meantime, we do have some kind of discussion in between now and the final vote, which I do hope to port, just like I did last time. And, and we are on the verge of really having finally a study that will give us hopefully what we asked for, not a year ago, but this council did, I think, five years ago when the community asked for 10 years ago. So thank you, Chair Carlon.
So we're going to come down to a vote that will have repercussions. And I think, what I think about it in my mind is Councilor McGovern's suggestion makes sense. The clerk reminded me that there's three types of recommendations that we could vote on favorably, unfavorably, and without a recommendation. And I think I'm going to suggest that we move this forward, the department's budget forward without a recommendation. And I believe we can catch up on anything that needs to be up on in the next two weeks as far.
Point of order.
Okay, we have forty, literally 50 minutes to our meeting, please. Go ahead, counsel.
I believe the motion, thank you, I believe the motion is to, to recommend with a disfavorable recommendation, so wouldn't we have to vote on that and then if it doesn't pass?
Whose motion is that?
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
We just, we've had a long discussion and then you have a motion. One second, please. There is no motion before the clerk at this time. I just made a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would, I vote, I would support you in moving this, moving a motion forward and the motion can be directed by the chair. I concur with you, there's been a lot of discussions, far fewer questions, and I think, and it's making the meet, meeting run very long and there's other important departments to discuss and, and maybe less than an hour. So I would support in moving, if I, if it's less cantankerous or controversial to move without making a recommendation, which the clerk has advised us is, is an option. It comes down the middle, so I would support you or make a motion to do that, to move that, we move this forward without recommendation.
The, Mr. McCormick, Ms. Unger, all got the message loud and clear. And it might very well be in two weeks that it changes and then we go forward on that basis. But I have, my goal is to make things work. The message has been sent and, and I moved the, the motion that I've suggested that we move the department's budget section to the full council with no recommendation.
Again, I'll just, again, I'll just, for the record, again, the motion is to send this to the full city council, to send the information technology department budget to the full city council without a recommendation. Motion, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan, was that a yes?
Present.
Present?
Changed her mind.
Counselor Nolan, present. Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
No.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
No.
No, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
No.
No, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes, six in favor, two against, one present.
All right, we have three topics. Employee benefits pulled by Counselor Nolan. Counselor Nolan, you have the floor.
A point of order, Mr. Chair, before Nolan takes the floor, could you just read out the last three or two items we had before us?
Yes, employee benefits, electrical department, and the clerk's office.
Thank you.
And so, Counselor Nolan has the floor with her employee benefit question.
Thank you. And I wasn't sure under what category this went because there's a few different parts in the budget, but that various numbers appear, but it would be helpful for me to understand why it was related under employee benefits. The pension was up 12%, 12.1% was much bigger than any of the other benefits listed. And that actually, under the budgeted position, there was, it went from $6 million, 6.4 in FY '20 to this year being expected to be 14.245. So if there's an answer for that question, that'd be great.
I'll be quick and hopefully this is a simple answer. In order to keep our 2026 pension obligation, to have all our pension cleared, which would allow us to free up money for hopefully OPEB other matters, we decided we would prefer to pay more and keep that date. We feel that's an important date. It's been a city objective for many years, rather than pushing that out, which you could have done to 2028. So it was certainly a decision that we feel the importance of paying off our OPEB, our pension obligations by 2026 is something that has been a priority of the city. So that's, that's why we decided to make that increase.
Thank you. That does answer the question. It wasn't clear from the write-up. I'm sorry if I missed something.
It's tricky. I don't, that's a good question. Thank you.
Okay. It was, it was big enough that I wanted to call it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And someday in the future, when we pay it all off, we'll have a seminar on OPEB and many other benefits.
I agree.
Ideally on some exotic eye. Any other questions on employee benefits?
Move with a favorable recommendation?
Counselor Simmons, I'm sorry, repeat that again, counsel.
Move with a favorable recommendation?
That's what I thought you said. Move with a favorable recommendation.
On that motion, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, we're on a run. The electrical department is next, and Counselor Nolan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Carlon. This might also be a quick question. I know that the electrical department has been working, working hard in a number of areas. And my question is that I didn't see, and again, I may have missed it, what the plans are in expectation for future growth because we know that with the increased electrification of the city, we expect within 20 years, the entire city will have to be, basically have so much of our infrastructure be switched over. And I'm just interested in finding out what the plant training are in expectation that even in the coming couple of years, we're going to need to make sure that we are ready to, to meet that demand, both on the inspectional side, which is on the city budget, and perhaps in order to, to help either residents or businesses in the city actually make that shift. And I'm just interested in whether that is part of the plans, particular department, or there would be another part of the city that would handle that.
Mr. Manager, I'm sure you know everything electrical.
I, I would suggest that this could be a capital question, Counselor, and if you get to us in writing, I would certainly get you an answer for the next meeting, if that's okay with you. And it could save us some time tonight.
Yes.
That's fine. And I do apologize, I had not said this earlier on. It was something that came up.
Okay, thank you.
But when I saw it on the agenda, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. And now for the most difficult office to deal with.
Move this item with a favorable recommendation?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Counselor Simmons.
On, again, referring the electrical department budget to the full city council with a favorable recommendation, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. And now, as I was saying, we'll go to the clerk's office. Counselor Zondervan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make sure that we fully utilize the next question we may.
No one's laughing.
Well, I'm trying, but I appreciate that maybe this is not my talent. Anyway, I, I have two quick questions on the clerk's office budget. So the first one is that the open meeting portal, we've been facing challenges all year with the index of being broken, and I'd like to know if that's being addressed and whether we have the resources in the budget to, to address that.
So we, we've discussed through you, Chair Carlon, Counselor Zondervan, we've discussed this a little bit earlier in the year. We've been aware of the issue with the meeting portal for several months now and, and really general issues with our current minute-taking and meeting software. We've been in conversations, we, when I say we, the clerk's office has been in conversations with the IT department through Patrick McCormick and his team, and we've had, been having discussions with the vendor. We are in the process of adopting a new software or looking for new software. We're at the stage now where we're waiting for, we've identified a product, we think it may solve the, the problems and will add additional functionality and improvements to the issue you're talking about and the general operations of the meetings, agendas, and minutes and so on. We are at the phase where we're looking for recommendations from other communities that are using the software and have, and importantly, have migrated from one data software solution to another and, you know, what are the challenges entailed there, the costs and so on. My current understanding, and Cormick can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the migration from our current system to the one we've identified so far would be totally free of cost to the department. And the pricing for ongoing operations for the new software would, would be in about the same range, so it won't affect our budget too much. And we are hoping to get this up and running and done by some time. I'll be optimistic here and say mid to late summer, but again, it may be in the fall, depending on how things, things work out. Part of that new solution is already kind of up and running. We've, and again, Patrick McCormick talked, discussed this a little bit during the IT, his, his conversation during the information technology budget. We've got our video up on a new video software, meeting portal, there's a link that directs you to another website. It's a little clunky right now, but that's because we're integrating pieces of upgraded, more stable software. The hope is to be on one unified system that works better, that does the indexing that we've discussed in the future. And again, the hope is that this is done this calendar year, which, you know, obviously goes in the next fiscal year.
Counselor, any follow-up?
Very, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's one of the best answers I've heard all day and I wish the clerk much luck with that and, and hope that we, we will be able to meet that timeline. It is challenging for us to do our work with the index of being broken, so I appreciate the, the effort to get that resolved as quickly as possible. So my, my final question is on the committee meeting minute. I know the clerk and I have talked about this. Very, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's one of the best answers I've heard all day, and I wish the clerk much luck with that, and, and hope that we, we will be able to meet that timeline. It, it is challenging for us to do our work with the index of being broken, so I appreciate the, the effort to get that resolved as quickly as possible. So my, my final question is on the committee meeting minute, I know the clerk and I have talked about this previously as well, and, and it does seem to be a resource constraint issue that, that's causing some of the delays we're experiencing. So again, my question is whether that is being addressed in this budget.
Again, through you, Chair Carlon, we've discussed this, I think I've discussed this with a number of counselors through the year, and even though through COVID, we've tried a number of different solutions, we've looked at some software options, where we've got sort of a transcription software, again, with varying, varying levels of, of success. I think we talked about to ask for additional people, so on and so forth. I, I, I have not raised that to the city manager, I do not plan to in the near term, only because, and again, I don't want to talk, but I've been working with the IT department, the cable, the cable department, and the, and I think the PIO, the Public Office, has also been involved in those conversations about closed captioning. Right now, we've got closed captioning for city council meetings, really, the closed captioning is only on the Zoom, and it's also a sort of separate, you, you open a separate website to go there. I know, or, I don't say I know, but, again, David Kael, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a budget allocation to the cable department, there was, there's eventually, once some technical and other issues are resolved, there would be a cable, there would be a closed caption for the, for, for all city council meetings, including the committee meetings. And I think those would be the best avenue to quickly churn out effects for the city council. If you look at the last two city council meetings, where you see the, where you saw the submission of the record that the council approved, those were generated using the closed captioning recordings from those two city council meetings, and I think that those turned out very well. So I think that'll be, from the, from the clerk department, that'll be a sort of a cost-neutral and very efficient method to fix that going forward. Again, I don't want to speak, there's, there's a couple of moving parts there, a couple of other departments impacted, so I don't want to say too much and get out of my area of expertise, but I think knowing that we're, that we generally moved in that direction, I sort of want to follow that path.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the clerk, thank you for that answer. So I don't know if anyone else can, can speak on how soon that might be implemented. I, I do agree with the clerk that, that that would be great as a, a solution, but I have no sense right now of how soon that could be up and running.
I can reach out, again, it's, it's a multi-department effort, and I can speak to, we've, we've had, we haven't had too many meetings recently, but we've had several meetings about it over the past year, and I can reach out to some of the people. Again, the, the departments that I've been in contact with mostly have been the Public Information Office, the IT Department, and cable, and, and it's really kind of facilitated by David Kael, and again, we can get together and we can get a response to, I don't know how long it'll take, again, I'm not in control of these departments.
So, Mr. Chair, well, so, Mr. Clerk, we'll.
Please, Mr. Kael.
We'll regroup, we have our weekly IT operation meeting, so we'll put that on the next agenda, just to get an update and see what is still left to be done, and we'll, we'll be able to find to. And I don't have a good timeline yet, because I don't want to speak out of turn without knowing what, what pieces are left to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Kael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, thanks, Mr. Kael, for that answer. Would it be possible to get at, at our final budget discussions on this item?
We'll provide an update, and, yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments on the clerk's office? Really, don't hold back.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
No, too late.
Thank the, thank the clerk for his efforts, and really, do appreciate the, the work that he does.
Thank you.
Move the clerk's office budget favor forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Simmons. Mr. Clerk?
On that motion, again, for the record, the motion is to refer the city clerk's budget to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Council McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Carlon.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero against.
So our, our next meeting is a week from today, and it will be as exciting as this past meeting, and we all look forward to your input. If you have additional questions, please get it to us by Friday morning of this week, so that the clerk has more than enough time to disseminate them. That could be an additional question, or if you've admitted questions on the departments of next Tuesday. Yes, that, I did say to the clerk's. The clerk is getting back at me and wants me to repeat that these should be sent to the clerk's office in care of his attention.
Mr. Chair?
Please, Madam Mayor.
One thing, or two things. I had, I know that we had, in the beginning, polled diversity committee and committee on civic unity, and I think we just, there's a lot that happened, and, all that to say, the question that I had, I'll follow up later, there's no need to spend the rolls on that. The second thing was that we do have a school committee budget hearing next week as well, and I will be asking members of the council to email me questions, so I can give a heads up to the school administration and superintendent to be prepared. And I think what we did last year was keeping it to two, two to three questions, so that we can get through everything. So I will follow up with an email on that as well, so.
And that meeting is Wednesday, in my room?
Wednesday the 9th, at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
And the budget is, you should have hard copies, and if you don't, is also online. And I believe Naomi sent out those links.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other comments before we?
Move for adjournment.
Counselor Simmons has suggested we move for adjournment.
On that motion, Vice Mayor Malin. Vice Ma, no. Yes, Council McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Carlon.
Yes.
Motion passes, in favor, zero against.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience and your input, and for good discussions. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you for your patience and your input and for good discussions. Have a good night.